The Board now reconvenes this meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 7:25 PM on May 2, 2017, at the Plano ISD Administration Building. I'm Missy Bender, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all here present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals: ensuring the continued improvement in student learning and ensuring the efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Dr. Brian Bingley, Superintendent of Schools; Nancy Humphrey, Board Vice President; trustees Tammy Richards and David Stahle; Susan Modisette, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services; Dr. Matthew Gutierrez, Assistant Superintendent for Employee Services; and Dr. Jim Wusso, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services. Seated to my right are Carolyn Mobius, Board Secretary; trustees Marilyn Hinton and Dr. Joran Solomon; Dr. Carrie Cooper, Assistant Superintendent for District Services; Steve Fortenberry, Chief Financial Officer; Dan Armstrong, Assistant Superintendent for Technology Services; Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent for Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives; and Denise Gillespie, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and the Board of Trustees. Welcome. We have a full house. I would also like to thank members of our Instructional Technology Department for serving as greeters and for distributing the agendas and comment cards. Please join us in applauding these staff members for their assistance. At this time, Vice President Nancy Humphrey will share an inspirational message. Ms. Humphrey.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. President Bender. You know, this is a special time of year, and as we have begun this very important time of year, when we welcome the news of-- it's the time we welcome the news of major achievements by our students. Such achievement also commands appreciation for supportive educators helping students achieve their dreams. We extend our best wishes to students and their families who are making important choices about their education path and their future.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to the recognition part of the agenda. Ms. Oliver, do we have any student guests we recognize this evening?
I don't have any cards at this point for that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Oliver. We have many to thank for their service this evening, as is evident from the gathering prior to the board meeting. But first, I wish to honor my colleague and retiring trustee Carolyn Mobius for her dedicated service to Plano ISD as a two-term trustee, Board Secretary, and as a dedicated Plano ISD parent, along with her husband, Dr. Jim Mobius, and her children. So can we recognize your family right now for just a minute? Carolyn took a leap into leadership in 2010, becoming a Plano ISD trustee and earning the trust of our community. Over these past seven years, she has been active, involved, and informed. She has never lost sight of the benefit that this Board provides to the children that she served. Carolyn really has a caregiver's heart, is active in PTA, and in her family-owned small animal clinic. Her love for family, animals, and her dedication to the community of learners, that is, Plano ISD shines in her many accomplishments. She has fulfilled her role as trustee with empathy and inspired leadership. We are all so fortunate to be the beneficiary of her service. And Carolyn, as a Board, we join together to wish you much future success wherever your next leadership journey takes you and to thank you for your contributions to Plano ISD. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Vice President Nancy Humphrey to present a special award to Carolyn.
Are we meeting at the recognition?
Carla, where is the-- it's over there. Oh, would you mind going over there, Carolyn? Thank you.
Okay, I've got two things, but I only have one hand because I want to say, I want to recognize all the hard work you've done, and it's always, always for the kids, always. And Carolyn has added so much spunk to the Board, I will say. And I've enjoyed serving with her for the seven years that we've both been on the Board. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Before I let her say anything, the Board also has a beautiful-- should I put it out?
Oh, sure.
A beautiful crystal plaque recognizing your service on the Board.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to hold it?
Yes, I have to pose. It's my last time. Thank you.
Why don't you say a few comments, and then we'll say a few comments?
Let's see. You better tie me. Who's going to tie me? I just wanted to say, it has been, it's been an adventure. I really love this school district. There's so many wonderful things that we do for our students, and like Nancy said, it's for the kids. Everything I did was for the kids. It wasn't for the parents. It wasn't for the teachers. It was to prepare our kids for the future, and that's the most important thing. That's how every trustee should feel. The kids are number one. Everybody else, I'm sorry, y'all are down here. But I do, I did want to say, I never talk about my family because I just, I don't want people to think I'm trying to gain favors, you know, from my family. So, but they put up, I can't look at them, they put up with me on my journey for seven years, and I know that they finally, when they asked me when I was going to run for higher office, I knew that they finally understood, you know, my passion for education and serving in this role. I do have some other people I'd like to acknowledge, in particular, on the Board. Miss C has been a good friend of mine for quite a while, and this, she's been one of the best Board Presidents, I think, that any district could have, and I'm just truly very, very happy that you're in that role this year, for sure. I also wanted to thank Tammy Richards. She and I have gone through so much together and coming together on our last project, the pre-K. Huffman has been an amazing journey. I'm really excited that that's taken off. And then Joran Solomon, who always makes me laugh. I mean, he and I can fight, and we're still, it's like brother and sister, and we're fine afterwards, so it's been very special times for me. I have gone through a few losses recently, a couple of really good friends, Kimberly Hopkins, who was a wonderful volunteer, Pat Darby, who some of y'all may know, who's been really key in Plano in all kinds of positions. And then my stepdad passed away, and I was very close to him, and that was just last week. So I have another journey I'm taking in being with my mom for a little bit to help her, but I just wanted to say that this has been a great, a great journey, and whoever ends up in these seats in the future remembers students are number one, and you need to work together to find common ground to keep us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to work. But now, we get to hear--
Let the roasting begin. Don't go. Chelsea, sir, don't go.
There's more to come. Let's have a few Board member comments. Board members, now's the time to just take a few minutes to share your thoughts, please.
I think as I consider Carolyn's service, I think the important question to ask, are students more successful because of your service? And the answer is a resounding yes. About two years ago, you sent me an email saying, hey, you want to work together in early childhood. We hadn't really gotten our group before that, but I think we've done amazing things since then. So I just want to particularly acknowledge the support you have given. This district would not have advocated for full-day pre-K for our low-income kids without your support. This district will be changed permanently because of that. This district will be changed because we're going to have our first elementary academy, and you were a critical force behind that. We're going to have our fourth early childhood, critical in that. And also, you were instrumental in looking at all of our schools to make sure all of our schools, our challenged schools, have the support that they need. So whatever you choose to do next, they better watch out, because you are a force for good.
And I'll second the force. If you don't know Carolyn, I think probably the word that best describes her is fiercely independent, and Carolyn is not afraid to share her opinion. But it was always, notwithstanding if we had a differing, different opinion, which there are rumors that perhaps we cussed one another in a subcommittee meeting, I don't know if that's true or not. But we always, always, Carolyn always had the best interest of the district, the best interest of its students, and its people who live in this district at heart. And at the end of the day, we always still loved and respected one another, and so thank you for your service. Thank you for your fierce independence, and thank you for everything that you've done for this Board and for the district.
Well, I already got to say a couple of things, but enjoy your Tuesday nights going forward.
And every other day of the week, too.
You won't have as many emails, I don't think, but I've enjoyed working with you. And as I said before, I mean, your vision is always about what's best, you look through the lens of what's best for the kids, the students in this district. And I applaud the efforts with the early childhood. I support that effort, and I'm glad we're moving forward with that. So the word I, instead of fiercely independent, I said spunk. But whatever you do going forward, I wish you much success, and stay connected here, and maybe come be part of an advisory board or something.
Well, I think I want to be next, because Carolyn, spunk is a good word, because there was a time when Nancy and I felt some real spunk from you.
Is it painting or spunk?
No. It was just a really dedicated force of drive from you, and I will never forget it, and I will always, you know, support you in doing that, because we, I had known you very long at that point, and I had no idea what was coming up. But it was great, and it was wonderful, and I really cherish all the time that we spent together.
So as Carolyn said, we did grow to be very close, and we had very direct conversations. I knew always that I could count on her to tell me exactly what she feels and exactly what she thinks, and exactly the words she chose, and she knew she can always rely on me to record it in case I need it for a later date. I didn't know that you're going to retire. I have all those recordings that are now worthless. But we were very direct with one another, and actually, to the point, one day I did something, and the next thing I know is your father, Jim, calls me and says, you owe me a bottle of wine, because you did something yesterday, and she went through a bottle of wine after that. Which, by the way, you could always count on her. I would always give her, I don't drink much wine, so I would always give her in every party, I would give her my tickets so that she can get more. But she was, she was the first person to welcome me to the Board and take me through the process. You know, if anybody is here is going to join this Board, and you don't know what's going to happen, and she took me through this, through the first day, so thank you.
So I'll wind this up. Carolyn, you've been a loyal friend. You've been a committed colleague, and you've always reached out to others that had a different point of view. We're better because of you and because of your service. So on behalf of the district and the Board, thank you. Thank you, Mobius family. I know how hard it is. We'll miss you. Congratulations. Let's have one last--
I do want to say one quick thing, promise quick. So my friend who's here, because my mystery husband, as he's known, had his own meeting he had to go to, but my friend Roxanne Bogdan has always been there for me and her family to help take care of the kids if I needed help. So thank you for helping me.
Can we do that real fast? Sorry. within our community who are willing to serve on board-appointed district advisory committees. These community leaders and members of our faculty and staff study issues involving the education of Plano ISD students and make recommendations to the school board. Earlier this evening, we hosted a reception for members of these advisory committees. At this time, the Board would like to recognize committee members who are in attendance. Please stand for the recognition as I call the name of your committee. Would members of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee and Staff Liaison David Hitt please stand for recognition? If any of you are here. Next, would members of the Diversity Advisory Committee and Staff Liaisons Audrey Daniel and Dolly Thomas please stand for recognition? And now, I would like to ask members of the Plano ISD School Health Advisory Council and Staff Liaisons Brian McCord and Megan Schuler to stand for recognition. Now, would members of the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee and Staff Liaison Teresa Biggs please stand? And would members of the Special Education Advisory Committee and Staff Liaisons Dr. Chrissy Duke and Bethany Rogers please stand for recognition as well? Thank you for your service. For their guidance and research, we also want to take this time to recognize the Elementary and Secondary Academy Committees that were appointed and served this year. I invite Susan Modisette and Jim Wusso to introduce these recognitions, please.
Thank you, President Bender. We'd like to recognize, I'd like to recognize our Elementary Academy Committee, and I see several of you in the audience. You just heard some of the outcome of your hard work, and we thank you for that. Our first Academy Choice Elementary Program will begin at Huffman, and we're moving forward with our fourth early childhood school. So thank you, committee, for your hard work, and if you would stand, please.
And I had the pleasure of working with the Secondary Advisory Committee, and our charge was looking at, our work is still in progress, by the way, but we're looking at high-scale, high-demand occupations that we can do high-school offerings to our high school students. So if members of that committee, I do see some of them in the audience, if you'd stand to be recognized as well.
And last, but certainly not least, we would like to take this time to recognize the 13-member committee that developed the Local Innovation Plan as part of the DOI concept initiated by the 84th Texas Legislature. This committee studies specific innovations in curriculum, instruction, governance, parent and community involvement, school calendar, budgeting, and other ideas. Their recommended plan was approved by the Board at our November 17 meeting. I invite the committee members who are able to be here tonight to also stand. Thank you, committee, the service of our staff members and community members. It makes our district so much better, and we really appreciate your service. Our next item on the agenda is the recognition of finalists and winners of the 2017 Texas Instruments Foundation Innovation in STEM Teaching Awards. I'm pleased to invite Dr. Jim Wusso to introduce this very special recognition.
Thank you, President Bender. For over 10 years, our staff's been honored to work with the Texas Instruments Foundation and the Plano ISD Education Foundation to recognize outstanding STEM teachers. Innovations in STEM Teaching Awards are made possible through the generosity of the Texas Instruments Foundation. To begin our presentation, I invite to the podium Mr. Chris Bragg, President of the Plano ISD Education Foundation Board of Directors, along with Karen Shepherd, former Teacher of the Year, PISD Teacher of the Year, State Teacher of the Year, Secondary Science Coordinator, and 2011 recipient of an Innovations in STEM Teaching Award. You would come forward, please.
Thank you, Dr. Wusso, and many thanks to the Plano ISD Board of Trustees for welcoming us tonight. It's an honor for the Plano ISD Education Foundation to once again be part of a recognition of superior secondary science, technology, engineering, and mathematics teachers in Plano schools. Tonight, the Texas Instruments Foundation provides us the opportunity to recognize outstanding teachers of secondary STEM courses. The Texas Instruments Foundation has donated more than $260,000 during the past 10 years to fund the TI Foundation Innovations in STEM Teaching Awards for Plano ISD. Again, this year, the TI Foundation has generously stepped up and granted us $31,500 to name three winners this evening. Our finalists are here with us tonight to be recognized among, and among them are our three TI Foundation Award winners. All six of the teachers you'll meet tonight are exemplary in their field. Again, we're most appreciative of the Texas Instruments Foundation for making those awards possible and to Plano ISD teachers. Joining us from the Texas Instruments Foundation tonight is Executive Director Andy Smith. Also joining us tonight from Texas Instruments is one of our Education Foundation Board members, Harshel Shaya. Now I invite Karen Shepherd to the podium.
And Chris is going to step to the center to shake hands and present awards, and he'll be joined by Whitney Evans, our Secondary Math Coordinator. This is exciting, because they don't know who the winners are, so here we go. The process for selecting this year's Outstanding STEM Teaching Award recipients started earlier this semester. Each secondary principal was invited to nominate one teacher who exemplifies excellence in teaching related to a STEM field. A judging committee of district educators and foundation representatives reviewed all the applications and selected the six finalists that you will meet tonight. Each of our finalists received a classroom visit by the selection committee, and we saw some magnificent teaching. Tonight's honorees represent excellence in STEM teaching every day in their classrooms. The three 2017 TI Award recipients to be announced will each receive a $5,000 personal check and a $5,000 award for their school to go towards classroom technology and innovation or professional development opportunities. I will now present all of our finalists, and Andy Smith, Executive Director, will present and announce the three winners. So we ask that all of our honorees stay up at the front, I'm sorry, we ask that all of our honorees and principals join us in the lobby after the presentation to take some pictures, and now, we're going to give you the three finalists. Are you all ready? We ask that all three finalists stand at the front until after all three are announced. So our first finalist, from Frankford Middle School, Renee K. Fan. A little bit about Renee. Renee says that she is thrilled to teach technology education and pre-engineering classes because the arena of technology allows students to bring together all of the topics they are studying, such as science, math, English, history, art, music, et cetera, and allows them to appreciate how significant each topic is for their growth as human beings and how these areas of study are intertwined in the creation of technology. Technology is ever-evolving, with much to explore, and I hope that I share my enthusiasm with my students so that they, too, are motivated to learn and push through the frontiers of knowledge. And we definitely saw that motivation, Renee. Renee K. Fan. Our second finalist is Kristen Shapiro from Plano East Senior High. According to Kristen, "The sciences, specifically environmental science and biology, excite me because they can create a fire for lifelong learning in students. I love my subjects because they are constantly changing, which means that I get to continually reinvent what and how I am teaching. My students see that the material we are engaged in goes far beyond the four walls of our classroom, opening the door for engaging discussions that are directed by my students. There's a real beauty in the ability to make connections, both interdisciplinary and with the real world. My students' learning and overall well-being is my first priority, and my number-one goal is to help them reach their full potential." And she does just that, Ms. Kristen Shapiro. This part's fun, because then they figure out whether they're a finalist or a winner. Should I continue? And the third and final finalist goes to Crystal Warren from Wilson Middle School. Crystal loves teaching science. "I love the messiness of science because my students can get their hands dirty, literally, and enjoy every part of it. I love that each day my students can become scientists. We explore and discover new items, and their curiosity is always intrigued. I am able to create excitement, and their natural zest for learning is contagious. It's exciting that science incorporates every subject. I love that I get to teach a subject that my students are excited to learn about and are very inquisitive with each new lesson. I love the labs and how hands-on science is. Just seeing their excitement each day adds to my own excitement for science." And we definitely saw that in your classroom, Ms. Crystal. Congratulations, finalist. I now invite you to take your seats. And now, Andy Smith, Executive Director of Texas Instruments Foundation, would you join me at the podium to announce the 2017 Award Winners?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight and to celebrate these wonderful, wonderful STEM teachers. You know, the TI Foundation's top priority is education, and within that, we focus on K-12 STEM teacher effectiveness. And one of the reasons we do that, and I guess the key reason, is because if you think about the numbers of students that these teachers will reach and other teachers will reach over their tenure in the classroom, it's amazing. It's truly a wonderful return on the investment, and y'all are changing lives every day. I'm so inspired. This is my third one of these events to go to, and I leave these every time being inspired by the work that you're doing in the classroom. This is our 11th year doing the awards, and Chris mentioned some numbers earlier specifically to Plano ISD. We have really found it to be a great way to recognize and honor these teachers. We want them to stick around in the districts. I know y'all want to keep them here as well and continue to advance, and kind of interesting that the Tony nominations were announced today, and now we have the awards tonight. I have enough correlation. But we also want to say a special thanks to Kristen Alexander and Chris Bragg, Plano ISD Education Foundation, and Karen and the selection committee for their work in this process. I know it was not an easy choice for the winners. So, that being said, it is now my pleasure to announce the TI Foundation Innovations in STEM Teaching Award Winners. Our first recipient is from Winter Middle School, Elaine Anaya. Elaine, would you come forward? So a little bit about Elaine. She says, "There is no better subject to teach than STEM subjects that allow for such diversity of thought and innovation of ideas." She is continuously-- She is continuously awestruck by the imaginative, creative, and original thoughts and designs that her middle school students have. She said, 'This is what keeps me excited and thrilled to teach. With a focus, focus of growth mindset, I provide opportunities for students to see their projects, to complete the design process from imagining an idea to creation and then production. From project beginning to project end, success is demonstrated by individual growth and mastery.'" Our next recipient is Lisa Barrett from Rice Middle School. Lisa? A little bit about what Lisa says excites her about teaching science. She writes, or says, "Many times in sixth grade, a student comes to middle school without really having a science experience, so they're very excited about performing experience." Maybe some of that messy stuff we talked about earlier. "Their excitement exudes to their peers as well as to me. Each and every day, I get energy from my students. They make me laugh, they challenge me, and they make me hopeful. Part of our job is to continue to fuel that excitement and do what we can to dispel and decrease their worries. I tell parents at open house, the students come in as fifth graders and leave as seventh graders. Along with that maturity comes responsibility and ownership of learning. I feel science encompasses all learning styles well and captures students who may not have been as successful in school. Students can really blossom in their learning, and that is a process I enjoy thoroughly." And finally, the next winner is Lisa Williamson from Armstrong Middle School. Lisa? Lisa says, "In learning and teaching math, there is a gradual building of knowledge that is very exciting. I'm excited when their entire face lights up because they understand a math concept or discover a challenging math relationship on their own. Math is full of logic. It teaches people to see relationships and patterns and to think their way through problems. I love that problems usually have one answer, but multiple ways to get to that answer, and there is pure joy when the solution is found. Math is everywhere, and it is satisfying when I can show my students how the concepts we are learning in class relate to the real, real world, or even better, when they can show me." Again, congratulations to you and all the finalists and the finalists.
Before everybody kind of takes off for the evening, I want, first I want to say thank you to Texas Instruments for being the outstanding partner that you are. Oh, Chris, are you not, you have remarks yet?
No, go ahead.
You sure?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. And, and I just, to our, our teachers, thank you for what you do for our young people every day. I never get tired of, of saying this, you know, I think everybody ought to know, you know, I'm kind of a science fair geek, right, Karen? We had 50 more science fair projects this year than we had last year, and folks, that is not the way science fairs are going nationally. They're going that way in Plano because of great, you know, partnerships, great students and teachers who are there for them, you know, and, and for the second year in a row, I never get tired, Karen is saying this, we, you know, our kid, we sent a big batch of those kids on down to the State Science and Engineering Fair. Karen was kind enough to let me get on the bus at 5:30 in the morning and, and tell them we are proud of them. They carry on a very rich tradition, and I always don't mind telling them, if we're going to go anyway, we might as well win a few of these things. And, and that's what they do. For the second year in a row, our, our, our high school students took half of the State Science and Engineering Fair First Place Awards. And that is, just, just to put it in perspective, there are thousands, over 1,000 school districts, so they're wrestling for the other half, if you want to come right down to it. And so, you know, all of that starts, and I even said this at the Elementary Science Fair Awards Program, where I was, that's where it starts. Our, our kids learn early on from people who tell them, "You can't just see it, you have to, you have to know how you, how you prove that," right? And I just can't thank you enough for what you do for our children. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? I just want to wrap it up and just say thank you again to Andy and the TI Foundation for making this possible. It is an absolute honor for us to be able to come and honor the teachers who, who exemplify the excellence of STEM teaching in our classrooms in Plano ISD. And as a parent of two young men who came through the Plano ISD system, I can tell you personally, thank you for making learning so fun and, and important for these kids. It makes a difference in their lives, so thank you and congratulations.
We will now move to the regular public comment portion of our agenda. For the public comment portion of the agenda, the board has public comment cards that are accepted, were accepted, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Cards are not accepted after 7:00 p.m. and are not transferable to other parties or speakers. All cards will be collected and given to Carla Oliver or a representative of the Communications Department, who will present the speakers during this time. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for public comment on agenda-related topics?
We do. We have 10 speakers for one of the agenda topics tonight in regard to class rank.
Okay. So, I'm going to read the instructions about how that process will work. Pursuant to Board Policies BED Legal, BED Local, and BED Exhibit, the Board may place reasonable restraints on the number, length, and frequency of presentations, so long as it does not unfairly discriminate among speakers based upon their viewpoint. The Board is not authorized to discuss or act on the public's comments or complaints if the subject is not on the agenda. If a member of the public or the Board inquires about a subject for which notice has not been given, the Board may only make a statement of specific factual information, recite existing policy in response to the inquiry, or refer the person to a staff member for more information or assistance. If the subject of the public comment is already on the agenda for the meeting, the Board may invite the speaker to stay until the Board reaches that topic on the agenda. In this case, this item is an agenda-related item, and it will fall under the Reports section with no action taken. Thirty minutes have been allotted to hear persons who desire to make comments to the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall complete the appropriate public comment form before the meeting begins and indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. No presentations shall exceed three minutes. If you are not finished speaking by the end of your three minutes, I will interrupt you so that we can move to the next person. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. Finally, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821, the Board will not permit the presentation of personally identifiable information regarding a student and will not discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Should a speaker wish to address one of these issues, they must do so through the appropriate local grievance policies, FNG Local, DGBA Local, or GF Local. So at this point in time, Carla, Ms. Oliver, will read a, a name or two at a time, and our Board Secretary, Ms. Mobius, will be our timekeeper, so she will, do you want to show them an indication when they have one minute left?
When you have one minute left, I'll do this, and if you're not looking at me, I'll eventually say, "One minute." So, I'll get your attention one minute.
And at three minutes, I will stop your commentary. You don't have to take three minutes, though. So, that's all right, because we have 30 minutes, 10 people. I know that's a 30-minute, you know, three-minute per person, but you can go shorter if you want. All right, at this point in time, I will turn it over to Ms. Carla Oliver to call the first speaker with another one on deck.
Yes, thank you, President Bender. I'll call a few names, and if you can line up in the order that I've called your name, if that's how you would like to speak, and please forgive any mispronunciation of the names, I will do my very, very best. But first, we have Shira Solomon. If you would come forward, and followed by Rong Wong. And then a third person that can, and come to the center, right here, that's fine. The last person who can line up behind Shira would be Yong Ping Ying.
Ms. Oliver, may I remind them that they have to hold the microphone pretty close?
Yes, please, get, get right there so that we can be sure and capture your audio.
And then before you start taking it down, yes, this is my daughter, and no, I did not plan this, this is all her.
Start when you want.
President Bender, trustees, Superintendent Bingley, and Cabinet members, my name is Shira Solomon, and I'm a sophomore at Jasper High School. Thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to talk about an issue that is related to Item 9B on the agenda, class ranking, specifically about helping students of all learning types be able to reach their maximum potential in the classroom. It's as a result, class rankings that represent their true capabilities. There are three main learning types that students can have, visual, auditory, and kinesthetic. The difference between how they learn best is huge. Currently, all three learning types learn in the same classroom, and teachers do not teach in a way that can satisfy the educational need of the different learning types. I noticed this problem through my personal experience. I am mainly kinesthetic learner, which means I learn best through hands-on activities, projects, experiments, and et cetera. Sometimes, I don't understand the given material in class as good as other students because it is taught in a way that suits the needs of another learning type. I am aware that a possible solution for kinesthetic learners is to go to the project-based academy, but this problem exists for all of the learners according to a survey that I conducted of 113 participants. Of 50 visual learners, 94% feel that they'd be more successful if they were in a class that was taught in a visual way. And of 26 auditory learners, 65% feel they'd be more successful if they were in a class that was taught in an auditory way. And of 37 kinesthetic learners, 86% feel that they'd be more successful if they were in a class taught in a kinesthetic way. A way to be able to identify the kinds of learners students are is to have them take a test, which could be in-person or online, to determine their learning type. I took multiple tests to find that I am a kinesthetic learner. Once you know the student's learning type, their schedules can be created based on that. And not only will there be an improvement in grades, but there could be an improvement in ranking and a possible increase in the amount of students taking honors and AP courses due to them being taught in a way that they can better comprehend the material being taught. Please take this into consideration, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I, I don't see the second person lined up, so...
Wah Ping Ying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Bingley, and the ISD staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the topic of class rank report. Now, first, I'd like to applaud the district's effort to reform the current ranking system. However, the task force report dated May 2017 raises more questions than it answers. Let me start with the problems. Two problems emerged from the report as the motivating factors for the ranking reform. One, unhealthy competition and inappropriate stress. Two, ranking may hurt those who rank below top 10% in their college application. Now, my questions are, first, how severe is the problem of unhealthy competition and inappropriate stress? How many students in the past have indicated or believed their college application was negatively impacted by ranking? Second, is class ranking the only or the most important factor that contributes to unhealthy competition and inappropriate stress? The task force report seems to assume so, and claims doing away with ranking would solve the problem. My concern is, there are other deeper root causes that cause unhealthy competition. GPA, for one, is the first thing that comes to my mind. So, I doubt the proposed alternative would be effective to reduce competition. In fact, it may backfire. For example, those who hover around 10%, they may face enormous pressure to get across that 10% line. More research needs to be done on what really drives unhealthy competition and what can be done to uncurb that behavior. Third, would doing away with ranking really help those who are currently ranked below top 10% to get into colleges they wouldn't otherwise do? Unfortunately, there's no hard numbers in the report to back this up. And also, what would removing ranking do to those who are currently ranked in top 10%? The task force needs to address the impact of a policy change on all students, not just a selective group. Finally, every point has two sides. What about the positive side of ranking, such as encouraging healthy competition and providing motivation to aspiring students? Now, the current report does not consider the positive impact of ranking. In its conclusion, it does not address the potential negative impact of removing it, which is inadequate, in my opinion. In summary, the current report does not evaluate the scale of the problems and fails to prove the causal link, if there's any, between ranking and the problems it tries to solve. Therefore, I strongly encourage the Board and the task force team to reexamine both ranking and GPA reforms, and to consider opt-in and personal ranking. I have a seventh grader who is hardworking and who enjoys learning. I don't know where she will stand in ranking, but I do want her to be able to make her own decision on whether to be ranked or not. Thank you.
And, by the way, in between comments, we listen, we're not going to be clapping, okay? Thank you.
Next, we'll have Emma Yee, followed then by Jean Zhang and Patrick Yan.
Okay, so first, I would like to thank all of you for being here today, for being willing to hear all of us out on this subject of class ranking in high school. And so, we know that there is unhealthy competition in high school over GPA, class ranking, all of that. But I believe the reason for this is because we have not put enough emphasis on the other things that contribute to college besides this. I believe that we should encourage students more to find a specific route that they are interested in, so they're planning for their future and not just striving to get on top of the class rankings. And I believe that abolishing the ranking, the rankings altogether would, it would stop the unhealthy competition, but it would also completely prevent there being a possibility of there being any healthy competition in the school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jean Zhang.
Good evening, dear Board members and superintendent and committee members, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk, and thank you for also talking to me, you know, open to the other group of the parents in the last week, and I appreciate the effort to take our inputs. I do want to point out some of the findings in the report that's being used on the conclusion. So, the current proposal on the ranking system, I would think it's a need for the studies because one thing we, one of the bases used in the report is using from the 100 universities and that coming back from the 54 universities, and that they're based on their response. First of all, this report actually excluded the top 10% of the students, so those, their inputs are not being taken. Also, on that report, 21 or about 40% of the university, they still indicate class rank is one of the most, the two most important factors for admission decisions. When there's no ranking provided, most universities would use their own method to recalculate. So, we are creating extra work if we are not providing the ranking information to them. So, why don't we just provide them to them? And we also have in the report used, we also have in the, more than 10,000 students and parents and teachers input from their survey, right? And two-thirds of their, the group all indicated ranking has been a significant motivation factor for them to work harder and to take more challenges. This inputs, I would suggest they should be ignored and consider what is the... This inputs, I would suggest they should be ignored and consider what is the alternative motivational factor if there are not, uh, there's no, um, you know, other better alternative, right? Um, we, um, I really appreciate, um, the board has been listening to us. And I would like to suggest the following alternatives. First, to give the option to have access, have option in and option out to their ranking sys data, right? There's multiple ISD have been doing that. And we're also suggesting to give students an option to know, um, where they are instead of the numeric rank, but provide a percentile. Uh, this will also giving the admission office, um, office in the university enough data for the admission because some of the university, they need top two percent, three percent, four percent, or seven percent, varies from year to year. Uh, we wanted to tell our kids, when we have an issue, we don't want to avoid it. We want to face it and find a better way to solve it, okay? We're also, um, we're also wanting to promote a healthy view to look at the ranking. This is so, this is something they're gonna face in the, in their growing, in sooner or later. Okay, we're confident with all correlation, this will be, um, this will be having a better future for PISD. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Patrick. Thank you.
Board trustees, Mr. Superintendent, first of all, I'd like to give credit, uh, to the class rank task force for the findings section of the report. The task force researched class rank reforms of other school districts and serving the PISD students, parents, and teachers to reach these findings. That being said, there's an apparent disconnection between the findings and the recommendation number one, which is identified, but do not rank the top ten percent of the graduates. Uh, here are some of the facts presented in the findings section of the task force report. Highland Park ISD, South Lake KO ISD, Austin High School, and Ings ISD ranks only top ten percent. The Anded ISD ranks all students unless otherwise requested by parents or students. Round Rock ISD ranks all students with unique class rank calculation. South Texas ISD and Spring Branch ISD ranks only top ten percent unless otherwise requested by student or parent. By the way, uh, Spring Branch ISD considers itself a non-ranking district. Please note, uh, none of those ISDs researched in the report stopped ranking the top ten percent like our task force has proposed. In the student, parent, and teacher survey findings, uh, majority of them consider class ranking important to college admissions and scholarship decisions and motivates them, all their students, to work harder. Granted, the current PISD class ranking system or GPA calculation method needs some reform to reduce student stress level. A radical proposal, uh, that would eliminate rankings of virtually all students without giving students and parents any option is not acceptable. Uh, here are a few of my recommendations. Uh, first, bring PISDs' class ranking reform in line with other reputable ISDs such as the Highland Park ISD.
One minute.
Here is what I have found in the Highland Park ISD website. A student's class rank will not be calculated or reported except for the top ten percent of a given class. A student in the top ten percent will receive from the district a certification class rank containing the student's numerical class rank, but the class rank will not appear on student transcript. When the district provides transcript of a student in the top ten percent to a college, it will also provide the certificate of class rank. I'm not saying we need to copy exactly what HPISD did, but we can certainly use it as a good reference. Some other reputable ISDs such as Leander ISD makes ranking optional for all students, which may be a good, uh, method too. Number two, carefully evaluate impact of ranking reforms to the current UTRST auto-admission policy.
Three minutes.
Which is...
Thank you for your comments. I'll call the next four speakers forward, please, if you can line up. Next would be Sheng Liu, followed by Jack Liu, Glenda Copeland, and Cynthia Shi. Thank you.
My name is Sheng and I'm a PISD student. I want to focus on the process, uh, while I'm talking. And I really want to thank Miss Yee and Nancy for your time and willingness to listen to us and always speaking with us. I really appreciate that.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Okay. So, um, number one, I want to make sure that when such important policy change happens, we need to make sure that we involve enough people. In this case, why parents are not involved in the task force, uh, team? Why? Let's say, I don't hear whether, uh, the school principal is involved in this task force team or not. That's my concern, number one. If you have more people involved in this task force team, I'm pretty much, I'm pretty sure that we have a better solution than this solution. Now, my second concern is, if such big change happens, we should give public more opportunities to speak instead of just one session, right? Because you conduct your research and then you should listen to the public and then take input and then do another research, right? That's a healthy way to conduct the research. And now, if you only say, okay, I give one session and we, we are going to make a decision in two weeks, is that too rushed? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jack Liu and I'm not a parent of PISD students. I feel I've, oh, oh, I've talked already. And, but I understand that, uh...
It's your turn.
The ranking, no, it's an important issue, it's a controversial issue. And I also understand a lot of people from different angle all agree that, um, you know, there are some up and down and pro and con for the current ranking system. There's a lot, some change is needed. However, regarding how to change, there's some disagreement. I really appreciate the PISD administration and PISD Board of Trustees, you know, spend the time, you know, do research, investigate, uh, know people's opinion and give the recommendation and including this opportunity for us to speak here. And, uh, but, uh, still, uh, based on my communication with, with parents, there's some, most people, there's concern about the totally abolish the, the ranking system. Uh, my personal opinion is that the ranking system would be kept. However, there's some improvement should be made. And if there are two students, their difference is only at about, like, say, ten digits after the decimal point. What point of making the ranking? However, if the, the difference is very big, I think the, the ranking makes sense. So, my proposal is, we should allow time. If there are two students or even seven or eight students, their difference is only seven or eight digits after decimal point, there should be a time, we don't need to make difference, right? And I, I'm just giving a general proposal. I think the T, PISD, you can decide whether the twelve decimal points or seven decimal points or five decimal points is the cutoff, right? Uh, but I think there, there's a, there's a cutoff, yeah. That's my personal suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Glenda Copeland and I, um, also am talking about the class rank issue. Um, I believe that the class rank, uh, change that you are proposing does not help our diversified student population. Um, I also agree with the other things that have been said about the, um, being top, top ten percent or top ten of your class is good motivation, I was one. So, um, and I also agree that, um, there needs to be, um, more consideration from the public, from the schools, from the principals about this issue and not just a vote by you all, um, after this short time. Um, and I was doing a little research today about, um, what colleges do and, um, the colleges in Texas are required to look at class rank. If you look at our own little PISD book, it says, "Class Rank is one of the things that they consider." Even in the news, um, the impact thing that was print, printed out, there was a little article about that. Class rank is considered. Um, so, I think doing away with it is, I don't know, it doesn't seem to me, um, like it helps at all. Um, Texas A&amp;M, they have to do an extra step if you don't present the class rank. They actually will give you one in their own little formula. So, why are we making them do an extra step? Um, uh... Additionally, if we, you know, if we're, I don't know what we're trying to do here, level the play, playing field, I don't know. If we're trying to level the playing field in some form or fashion, we need to consider our growing diversity populate, diversified population. Um, take the AP classes. I mean, as it stands now, if you want to be top ten percent of your class, then you have to take AP classes.
One minute.
You have to take at least twelve AP classes, I counted, which is twelve hundred dollars. What if you're a single mom living in one of the new apartments and you have a great student, but you don't have twelve hundred dollars to take AP classes? Your kid is automatically kicked out of the top ten percent, period. Sorry, you don't get it, you're not even qualified, you don't take AP classes right now. Um, what if you're a band student who you, all four years, you're in band? There's no AP in band, there's no AP in music at all. So, what if you, so immediately, you're kicked out of the top ten percent because you want to be in band? Um, because that's not an AP class. Anyway, those are my opinions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Carla, do we have any more?
Yes, we still have one speaker. Uh, Cynthia Shi.
Uh, thank you for the Board of Trustees and, uh, Mr. Superintendent and the PISD administration for giving me the opportunity to speak here. And I had the opportunity to meet with PISD administration, maybe like a two weeks ago. And I came out meeting with the impression that the decision has already been made, that, uh, conclusion has been drawn at PISD that ranking is not important, it should be just totally trash. And I want to urge the board to keep an open mind because this conclusion is quite different from what, you know, the majority of the parents, students, and teacher surveys said. Majority of them said, you know, the ranking is still important in college, the major, in college applications and scholarship decisions. Ranking is still important as a motivation factor. Uh, secondly, um, I echo the board and, uh, PISD administration's concern, many families' concern on unhealthy competition. And I can't say how many times this conversation go through in my family that, you know, like, I had to discuss with my daughter, do you want to drop that four-point-o class because it's hurting your, uh, rank? But I would say ranking is not the most important reason, it's not the only reason. There are many other things we should have addressed before we touch the ranking. We are allowing students to take seven APs in a eleven degree, in my mind, that's just crazy. So, one, one student, you know, takes seven AP classes, it just sends a message out to every student, they need to do that because otherwise their transcript is going to look just not as, uh, their transcript is not going, is not going to look as rigorous to colleges. And also, you know, we're, uh, allowing the, uh, the, the GPA to go to, you know, five, six decimal points, but, you know, that just, I think we should, you know, cut it at two. And, um, uh, you know, the student cheating, we are not, you know, uh, carrying out zero tolerance on student cheating. And we are not educating our students, you know, how important the good habits, you know, how important the managing time, managing priorities is going to help you in the long run. So, I think these are all the lessons we can do before we touch on ranking. And the last, I want to, I am concerned, like, you know, the, the one hundred and eighty degree change PSC is going to make here, how is that going to impact PSC's, uh, PSC's rating, how is that going to change PSC's characters? The characters that define PSC in the past, you know, twenty, thirty years. Um, competition is, is not all bad, you know, uh, we, we need certain competition. My daughters, they both played sports. And I can see a clear difference it makes when you, when I pull them from, um, recreational league to competitive league. Even you just introduce, uh, a scrimmage in a practice, you can see a difference. So, how we, how we accommodate that motivation factor of ranking into, you know, a student's, uh, uh, life? And we rank, you know, everywhere. We, we, we got review at work, you know, we go to tournament, we got rank, so why is it different? And there are other things, uh, I think that will help too, is just a percentile ranking. That's going to take our students, you know, transferring from, from schools because of the rank. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That completes the, uh, comment section of our agenda. Since all of you spoke on the same topic, I invite you to stay tuned to listen to the report that will come shortly. We will now address the consent agenda, which includes personnel recommendations, minutes of previous meetings, bids, purchases, and construction items. Are there any requests to remove an item or items from, uh, the consent agenda for further discussion?
Yes, I would like to ask to remove item H from the consent agenda, textbook adoption.
Okay. We will remove item H from the consent agenda and we will consider that under item eight E for discussion and action at the end of that agenda item, eight E.
And President Bender, we, we ask that, uh, item A three be pulled from this evening's agenda.
So, we will pull item A three and it will not be added to any other part of the agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we accept the remainder of the consent agenda as outlined.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. With the approval of the consent agenda, we now move on to section eight, items for discussion and action. Item A. This is, this is consideration of possible action to approve a contracted position as interim deputy superintendent.
Thank you, President Bender. As I've continued to evaluate our administrative structure in concert with trustees, uh, I'm requesting that we add an interim deputy superintendent to our executive cabinet.
So, I, on behalf of the board, I'd like to, um, thank Dr. Bingley for continuing his analysis of, uh, the district's needs. And I'm glad to see that this item has been presented.
Just if I could, a little, as a matter of explanation, during the interim, interim period, uh, there'll be an analysis and study that will lead to a formalized job description and areas for supervision for the eventual placement of a full-time deputy superintendent following the interim review.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item A B.
Uh, thank you, President Bender. I kind of alluded to that in the first one, but, um, we, we certainly would recommend it be cons, be consideration to have, uh, a board submit, board subcommittee input into, um, that analysis that, that we would do as it relates to this formalized job description.
Okay. So, uh, this item considers, uh, possible action to authorize the board president to appoint a board subcommittee to work with superintendent to identify a recommended candidate to serve in the contracted position as interim deputy superintendent.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight C.
Thank you again. And as the board knows, we've been engaged in a fairly comprehensive review of our special education program. Uh, one of the realities that emerged from that analysis is that while we don't have a dramatic difference in the number of special education students, uh, their overall profile has changed quite significantly. Uh, and that change really reflects a much higher percentage of students with a much higher, with much higher needs and, and a, and a corresponding level of service. Uh, we need to continue to have an organizational response to those needs. So, we're requesting that a senior executive director for a special education services position be added to provide leadership for that organizational response. And if the board approves this request, Dr. Gutierrez will be asked to develop, post, and bring forward, uh, a candidate for board approval.
Uh, we appreciate your continued review of, um, the district's needs. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight D. Uh, this is an item that the board operating procedures... This is an item that the Board Operating Procedures, Board Subcommittee, is seeking discussion with the Board regarding a couple of proposed changes to Board Operating Protocol. As a parting gift, Carolyn did some specific review of these protocol items because she's very good at that. And so the items that are presented in your packet are those, are two of the items that reflect potential change. So do we have any discussion regarding either of these items?
Do we need a motion?
Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I move that we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to make a friendly amendment. Actually, Denise already has the text, just that item B in the procedure currently reads, as amended, currently reads, "No Board Member Shall Hold Office Without One Year Minimum," and that should be, "Shall hold an officer position instead of office," because we do hold office as trustees, so it's a minor.
Okay.
I wasn't ready to leave.
So you made the initial motion, right?
Yes.
So do you accept your friendly amendment?
I don't know, I'll have to talk to myself. Yes, I will accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Well, I'm not sure the protocol here, but I have a question about traditions of the Board, item B, Board Members Who Serve During the Current Period of the Current School Year and Not Returning Are Invited to Participate in Graduation Ceremony. I'm looking for clarification, because I know that we already have the tradition that a former Board Member may sit on stage and hand a diploma to their family, or, you know, niece, nephew, son, daughter, kind of thing. So I'm not sure if having eight people, or nine, or however many, you know what I'm saying? I'm not sure if we're adding too many people on the stage.
Okay. Do you want to explain?
Based on some of the research I was doing, that tends to be one of those things that some people just really want to participate in. And I know when we changed the, well, and I can't remember which new policy it is, but when we changed the officer's position, when that turn's going to start, I just started trying to compile, okay, what would be a good solution to maybe the fact that a trustee who's been here, you know, for the whole year would like to serve, you know, maybe during graduation. I'm totally okay either way. I just saw this in Lender, I think it was Lender ISD Board Operating Protocol, so I just thought I'd suggest it.
My understanding, when I read this, because I had the same concern, we had A already in place, but B, my understanding of B was, at least from the way the text reads, is that you're just invited to participate.
Yeah.
Whereas A talks about specifically being on stage, handing over diploma to a family member.
So what is the definition of invited to participate? Are they handing out diplomas and shaking hands?
Yeah.
And I guess if an incumbent is opposed and doesn't return, I feel like that might be awkward on stage. That's my only concern.
Invited, not required.
I know.
And when we've done it in the past, though, we just had that person come up on the stage and just hand the diploma to their particular relative and they leave.
That's an A. B is different.
So B provides the opportunity for participation in an equal capacity as either newly elected or currently serving Board Member. Equal treatment in all facets, so that's what item B provides.
Yeah, I don't really have any issue with this. I think as a practical matter, that the, you know, where you're going to see the issue is when a parent has a child, a former Board Member has a child graduating in a class, and they want to hand the diploma out to not just their child, but maybe the kids their children grew up with. And, you know, having been a baseball coach and having been, had that situation with Blake's Group, I was a trustee, but I would have wanted to hand out diplomas. And so I think that's probably the benefit of what we're talking about. I think that the potential detriments of having a lot of people on stage and having a bunch of old ex-trustees hanging out is, I mean, I get that in theory, but I think as a practical matter, it's not going to happen, because once you sit through three graduation ceremonies in a day, you pretty much have fulfilled your obligations for the rest of your life for doing it unless your kid is there. So I, I mean, I don't really have any issue with this.
Well, and I'll just state, when I was first selected, I honestly did not know if I was supposed to participate in graduation. So that, you know, that was one of the things, because I honestly thought Mary Beth, I think Mary Beth's, yeah, was my position. I thought she was going to be there, but then I found out, oh, no, you know, it was last minute thing. So it's just a suggestion.
Any other discussion?
So we just talked about giving other diplomas to the friend of the person.
I would say just helping out. I mean, if, I know that I'm always running around like crazy during the graduation ceremony, so I think all of us can say that we're totally, we love it, but we're totally exhausted at the end of the three, so.
Look, I mean, I'll just say this, Board Members give a lot of their time to this district. And so to have an opportunity to go back up on stage when you're not a trustee and hand out a diploma, I don't think that's asking a whole lot of the district, and I honestly don't think it's going to be a huge issue for us if we were to incorporate this.
And you know, you served for the entire year, not to mention you served for four years before that. Those kids who are graduating that day, they, you followed them for at least the last four years, and because graduation is a month after election, I'm okay with just close the loop, just get closure, give them their diplomas.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been amended. We have a second?
I just want to ask one more question.
Okay.
Carla, do you see this as any problem? Is that?
No, the only thing I would add is that anyone who would be coming into that immediate stage area, just as long as we know in advance, because there are security processes that we must go through, and then certainly the kindness and the courtesy to make sure that they know where to go and where to arrive, so that would be my only request, is that we make sure we have that information ahead of time.
And it is part, it says that it will be their responsibility to let the superintendent and current Board President know that she, he would like to participate in graduation ceremony.
Right. Like, for instance, with the upcoming graduation that we're preparing for, the number of seats that go on the stage, those are actual things that we count and number, so if there are no seats, everyone's standing and shaking hands.
Okay. All right. So now I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Not opposed? Motion passes. We'll see Carolyn at graduation.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Now, into the report section.
Huh?
Oh, thank you. Item now, 8E. Dr. Solomon, would you like to address this item?
Yes, the item is requesting, or is the approval of textbook, and I don't have any issue, specific issue with this textbook. I just want to address a point that was pointed out to me by several parents in the district, and I have to admit that I haven't seen evidence, I'm just sharing it, so I'm really asking a question. In the 83rd legislature, the House Bill 462 had several important provisions regarding the curriculum standards, and specifically talks about Common Core. It talks about, it prohibits school districts from using Common Core state standards to meet the requirements. It prohibits school district from being required to offer Common Core, and prohibits the Texas, the TEA from adopting or developing assessment based on Common Core. The comments that were submitted to me were, or in some cases, I got emails, in some cases I got calls, that some of our material does still have Common Core written on it. So the question I have is, what process do we have to make sure that we comply with the Texas law?
Well, I'll offer this, and you can ask for further detail if you'd like, but I don't remember the exact meeting, but a few, several meetings ago when we went through this, we, I went through in detail the textbook adoption process. So I'll just summarize saying that's a multi-step process involving committee members from various roles. It's a carefully orchestrated process. I'd say the thing, maybe in response to the last part of your question, just to remind everyone that the materials we use, in most cases, are a national audience or even an international audience. So there could be references to Common Core standards in teacher materials or other materials associated with. The thing that I can assure you, though, with certainty, is that in the review process, and we use review matrices and various things, in no part of the process do we ever use Common Core standards as part of the, as part of the review. So I can assure you that we follow not only the letter, but the spirit of law. We don't use Common Core standards as an analysis tool to examine the materials. Are all materials completely void of reference to Common Core? I can't guarantee that. And that's, again, largely because we purchase materials that are on the open market, and Common Core is used in many states across the country.
So you feel pretty comfortable that we are not in violation of law, state law?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so this item is an additional textbook adoption. It's originally item seven, eight, and it has now become item 8E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I should have made the motion first.
Okay, now on to reports. Item A, Dr. Russo will introduce the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee Report.
Thank you, President Bender. Let me, Teresa Biggs, our Director of Advanced Academics and Chairman of the GT Committee, to present the report.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is start with the two goals that we were charged with by the Board. The first one was develop and implement a parent support program that was tied to the equity work. That'll be covering as we move through the report. So I'd like to move to the second point. And this was the recommend policy and changes to assure that the district does not block student progress in any way. And we did look at current practices around these policies as it related to student progress, and we concluded that the district provides a wide range of opportunities for equitable student progress, and we did not see as a committee that there was any reason to recommend any policy changes. And what I'd like to do now is take you through just the four major sections. The first one, capacity development and data-driven decision-making. This actually is ongoing. Every year, we interpret data, we look at, especially now that we are doing our equity work, we want to make sure that we are increasing representation in our low, our low-represented groups. So we look at that data every year. We also look at the effectiveness of our program and how our students are doing in their courses. So data is always going with us. We are doing ongoing data mining, trying to find more students that we would like to refer for PACE testing for gifted services, and continuing training with teachers on that. We started last year training our ESL specialists and our bilingual teachers at elementary, and that was highly successful. We will continue that this summer, where our bilingual teachers will also receive their 30 hours of gifted training to help us find our bilingual gifted students. And I anticipate this will be a legacy practice. It's been, it's been very helpful. Because of the bilingual training, I can tell you that our Phase III students, our Phase I students are students that place automatically, their scores are very high. Our Phase II students are close, but not completely there, and the decision is made on campus by looking at other evidence, qualitative data, whether the students should be placed in gifted services. Our Phase III students are frequently made up of our low socioeconomic kiddos, and our bilingual students that just tend not to do well on standardized testing because of the lack of experience with standardized tests. Last year, we had 300 elementary Phase III cases brought forward, about 300, and this year we had over 500. And we feel strongly that's a direct result of the work we've done with equity with our teachers and the training we've done with our bilingual specialists and ESL specialists and teachers. And the bilingual teachers and ESL specialists are now at the table at the Phase III committees when placement decisions are being made, and we're very excited about the progress we've made there. Then student learning. We continue our conversations about, especially at the secondary level, what constitutes meaningful and realistic homework, and this ties into the social-emotional learning in the district as well, trying to keep our kids healthy while they are learning. So that will be ongoing conversations, ongoing training. And then elementary, the committee recommended that we develop a social-emotional thread beginning with elementary K through 5 that's specific to gifted children, and we have set aside funding and curriculum writing time this summer to start developing that, this summer for elementary, with the hope that we'll expand that into secondary starting next year. And we continue professional learning focusing on vertical and horizontal alignment. Community connectedness, we're excited about this. We did a lot of work on this, and this ties into the Board goal earlier. So one of the things that the committee recommended with it was that we were a little bit more transparent about our curriculum. And so what we want to do is, we're going to develop a website. Now, we know that each campus has a website, and the gifted specialists will have a site where the parents can go and see what's going on with that specific campus, but the committee recommended a district website where there'd be a common message, where we would post just overviews of different units, that there would be links to different resources and national and state organizations, so parents would be better informed, and there would be consistent message across district. So what we'll do is develop that, we talked with technology already, we'll develop that this summer, and then all of the campus teachers, they can just link that to their campus We do program evaluation surveys, we send it to students and we send it to parents. We do usually about every three years. The committee recommends that become an annual event. So the committee reviewed our surveys and made changes, and we'll be pushing out that in May of every year, beginning this year. And this is the big one, the parents want a gifted conference, and we're excited about this. So what we're doing is we're in the process of putting together a group of PACE specialists, gifted specialists, and we want to look at putting together a gifted conference this fall. We can't decide, we're still exploring, whether it would be a full-day conference or a half-a-day conference repeated twice, which probably be the first year of the way we go. And they want us to focus on social-emotional needs of the gifted student. That's what parents really feel, they want support. So we have plenty of wisdom and expertise in the district among our staff that are very excited about putting this together, and we have committee members that would like to be part of that and help us frame what that might look like. Our biggest concern is that so many people will show up, we may not have space for them. But we're very excited about that. And one thing that I did not put on the report that was, that we spent quite a bit of time, so my apologies for this, is the district purchases online training, gifted specific training through our state organization. It's an anomaly, it's terrific training, and what we did this year is, starting to move in that conference area, is we asked them to bundle in some webinars for parents. And we had our committee review eight different webinars, and they chose three of them. They chose everything, all three had to do with social-emotional learning, and we pushed that out to parents as a courtesy of the district. So all of our parents of gifted kids received that link, and they were able to go in and watch three different webinars on social-emotional needs of their students, and that was very well-received, too. And that's it for me.
Okay. Board Members, do we have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just appreciate all the members of your committee and the parents and staff that came together and put these recommendations together. It takes time, and I know that not everybody has a whole bunch of that, and so thank you for the work that your committee did.
They're great. Thank you.
Can I add too, that when, just very quickly, when we talked about putting, giving the committees a charge, this is exactly what we wanted, at least from my perspective, was for the committee to study a specific item and come back with recommendations that, I keep thinking of the Dyson commercials, you know, we don't make whatever, we make it better. Well, that's kind of what the committee's doing, is you're not, you're making what we're doing better, and that's the whole point. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add a final thank you, and wrapping it all
If I could add a final thank you, and wrapping it all up, really, I mean, obviously, thank you, Teresa, and really, all of the folks in our academic services. It's been a tight... You are working tirelessly to address this issue. And I would say thank you to the Board for, you know, we asked a year ago to allow us to kind of focus on a couple of big issues. This was one of them, and we have been tenaciously pursuing a lot of things that are going to, in the end, close opportunity gaps and let all kids have access to things that can help them, you know, ascend to whatever excellence they can. I just can't say thank you enough for that work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report, Susan Modestet, our Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services, will introduce the class rank task forces, follow-up to the questions that were posed at the April Work Session. Ms. Modestet, please.
Thank you. I don't have a report, other than what I've submitted to you as responses to the questions that you've asked, and really are just seeking direction from the Board.
I think there were a number of... I don't know which mic to use. I think there were a number of good comments made by the parents in terms of how you do the GPA calculation. I think that's something that warrants more study. We need to understand, and we know that children are dropping out of band in fine arts because they don't want to hurt their GPA, and that saddens me. My children decided to stay in even at the risk of the GPA, but we need to have some solutions there. We need to understand the credit by exam. We need to make sure that those processes are more, are easier to find on our website. In the old website, they were not particularly easy to find, and I know there were limitations in terms of particularly the speech class, getting a slot to do that. So, I think we have some real work to do there, and I think that will be very beneficial to our students moving forward.
I have to echo Tammy's comments. I won't reiterate everything she said, but I think that that course weights and the incentives for children to take certain courses. I want them to take a course because they're interested in the subject matter, not because they just want an extra bump in their GPA. I want them to have the chance to explore, because this is a time when they're not paying tuition, and this is a time when they're formulating their desires of what to do. So, if we can look again, like you said, at the course weights and the GPA, and I know, I've told people, it's like in an Excel spreadsheet. It's a circular equation, so it's not an easy topic, but it is something that I think merits some looking at.
If I could, Board members, we had a lot of conversation related to the meshing of both of these research studies, and if, as what was shared with us is that the desire would be that they do, in fact, move in concert. And also, that with moving in concert, we would need to make sure, certainly, as it relates to any GPA discussion, that those be completed prior to when young people are beginning to sign up for classes. And so, the reality that we were confronted with as we bash that around, that really is October. And then, but the flip side of that is exactly what you said, Ms. Richard. We came to the conclusion, this really is, if not as, if not certainly as complex as the class rank, perhaps more so. And so, I mean, our best recommendation would be that if, in fact, that's, that there is that desire to move in concert, as well as to make sure, I mean, I think we would recommend that we basically be given another year, if you will, to engage in the kind of research and inclusion and focus groups and surveys and all of the things that occurred in the class rank. I guess the upshot is we would not feel that that would be feasible to be completed by October. So, if that's true, then what we'd be doing is looking for the following spring to ultimately make sure we would be in front of that October kind of deadline, if that makes sense.
I definitely agree that I think it needs to go move together and not, you know, split it up like it was first presented. I think that a lot of our parents will be a lot happier to know, and students, excuse me, students will be a lot happier to know, okay, what is this change going to be and what classes will be considered, you know, in the GPA? Will we not have classes in the GPA? I mean, there's some great points that were brought up and have been brought up, you know, by us at the last meeting and tonight with the parents, and, you know, again, I'll reiterate what Mr. Lewis said, and I agree with him. How many points, decimal points are we going to go out before we say, you know what, really? Six decimal points out, four decimal points out, three decimal points out? It starts getting a bit ridiculous, and I think that that hopefully will be something that y'all consider, too, since I'll be gone.
Well, I think one question might be statutory. There might be an answer that the state has for us in that regard. I just don't know what it is.
You know, one more thing, I am a big believer of measure twice, cut once, and so, if we need to really think about that and really do some more research, I'm okay with waiting before we make a decision. One thing I am going to ask is, once you make a recommendation, that we don't make the recommendation in one work session and then, two weeks later, be asked to vote on it. Because once the recommendation is out there, that's where, that's where people, that's where parents, that's where we can start poking holes in it and ask all kinds of questions. Because at some point, you're going to have a comprehensive recommendation, but that would be the point to challenge it, and I just feel that two weeks might not be enough. And so, if we maybe at some point, when we plan when we are going to produce this, at least, if we're going to vote on it at a board meeting, have it presented as a recommendation, not the work session before, but the work session before that. That would give us about a month and a half, six weeks, to go through it.
The additional item I'd like to suggest is that, based upon that timeline of October, I'd like to make sure that we have some complimentary communication materials to help parents and their students understand, what does this mean to me? You know, maybe an assortment of questions along, you know, we're very big into the social-emotional component, and we hear that playing out in gifted and talented education and so forth. But just helping with assortment of questions so that students and moms and dads can help their child, guide them through this process with, by considering the right kinds of things. So, having an education component, an informational component that is well-fought out and lodged in time, so that it's early enough in the process in middle school and start, you know, indoctrinating or, you know, messaging, putting these messages out there early enough. So, I think that's just also an important element to complete the cycle. Then, the children have those questions and enough information to make selections in the spring timeframe and know what it will mean to them thereafter.
So, to piggyback off of you, definitely having the parents understand what colleges do now, I think is critical, because it isn't what we think. It's not. And I think that that will help the parent also understand, because I know, you know, with my first kid that went to college, I was like, what? I really don't have to worry. And, you know, even then, I think for kids to understand when they are in college and when they're in engineering or biomedical engineering, guess what? You're going to make some 30s or 40s, probably. So, I just think we don't, you know, we need to prepare our kids going up through high school, but they also need to understand, once they get into college, it's a whole new world. Just because you are a straight-A student in PISD, which says a heck of a lot, guess what? It's not going to be that way. Or it might be, but you made 70s and you end up being an A student, so what do you know?
So, thank you for preparing the responses to these questions, like we asked, and we will consider policy change at a much more future date. And I appreciate hearing from the parents that, you know, spoke to us individually and tonight, and I would just ask that you be patient with us. We're going to continue to study this. We all want a great outcome. And just to understand also that we listen to all the points of view and will reach a conclusion. It might not be exactly what you want, but know that we have listened and we're going through the process, and we will, you know, do our very best at all times to come up with a very best decision. So, we appreciate our staff's support in that effort. I know they worked very hard on this study, and I appreciated the Hanover work, and I appreciated those 42 other studies that were analyzed along with that. So...
If I can just compliment what you said, one of the speakers said that we've, the perception was that we've already made up our minds before this meeting. I think that what you see here is that we haven't. We are listening, and we, in fact, if you noticed, this item was under reports and not items for action. So, even before this meeting, with the feedback that we have received, we realized that we need to think about this more. So, no, we haven't made up our minds before the meeting.
I just want to say one last thank you, because I know that administrators last week met with some of the parents that had written us so that they could provide more information. So, thank you to our staff who came together to do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Our next report comes from our CFO, Steve Portnery. He's going to introduce the budget report. And this is the most interesting part. I'm kidding.
Thank you, President Bender. It's amazing how I can clear a room.
It's a school night.
All right, rolling right along. We are already on Slide Three. Tonight, just wanted to mainly give you kind of an update as to where the budget is at this point. And for those who might be listening to a budget presentation for the first time, they might wonder, since we're going to adopt the budget in June, why is the report so short tonight? But, so for everyone's benefit, if they might not know, I just wanted to quickly go over the fact that this has been with the Board and staff about a six-month process so far. We started in November, discussing the budget calendar and goals. January, we hit the new year, talking, talking you through the assumptions and preliminary estimates for the budget. February, you spent time talking about how we compared to our peers, looking at state comparisons and our own trends. March, you heard from the HR staff and from Tasby in terms of the compensation review, which is the biggest part of our budget. April, we went, spent several hours going through the departmental budgets, talking about staffing changes, the debt service fund, and the FANS fund. So, the point of all that is, this is maybe a fairly short report tonight, but it's kind of pulling together things that have been discussed in much detail for about a half a year. I'm not choked up, I just have allergies or something tonight. So, changes in our revenue outlook since those preliminary estimates back in January. We initially projected 6% property value growth. Earlier, I guess it was late last week, the appraisal district sent us our certified preliminary estimate, and it's 7.6% growth, so we pick up about another $7.4 million in revenue. That's the good news. The bad news is that with the state funding formula, the next year, that catches up to us as it hits the formula and it increases our recapture almost dollar for dollar. As far as legislation, there is really nothing certain yet. Both the House and Senate appropriations bills, which are now in the Conference Committee, where they sort out their differences and come out by the end of this month with the final appropriations bill. Both versions increased the Austin yield, which is the Golden Penny yield, pretty significantly. It's currently, I believe, $77 per penny per student. This increases it to almost $100. So, we feel pretty positive about that one coming through, and the numbers that you see tonight do reflect that positive impact of about $9.1 million. Also, increasing our per capita projection. Earlier, we were using $180 per student. We feel comfortable now using $220 per student, so that adds about $2 million. So, not, you know, anything related to the state is not final until the legislature adopts that appropriations bill, but it seems to kind of be taking shape. There is a House Bill 21, which could add up to about $10 million, a little under $10 million. I don't believe that bill's going to make it through the Conference Committee, but hopefully, there may be a compromise where they end up with half that money, and so, we could still get some money as they work through the Conference Committee.
Is that almost, that $9.8 million, is that related to reduction of recapture? Or is this for every...
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right.
Yeah, it's kind of a misnomer to say we might get more state funding. All it means is they let the financial taxpayers keep some of their money, a little bit more of their money here local, and we'll go through some of that a little later to show how big that's to come. Very good point. So, looking at the currently amended budget for this year compared to the proposed for next year, on the local, just at the revenue side on this slide, our local revenue would increase about $41 million. That's assuming that we keep the $1.17 property tax rate, and so, that increase is because of the 7.6% property value growth. We also have increased our investment revenue estimate, as the Fed funds rate has gone up a couple of times in the last 12 months, and it's certainly nowhere where it used to be. I think we're real happy now if the number has a one on the front of it. It's going to be 0. something percent. But, that's a pickup, as the rates do increase, that's something that we pick up without any more effort, really, just because the market's increasing. Of course, those are more than offset by the recapture number down towards the bottom. As our recapture next year, that's our payment to the state under the Robin Hood formula, that will go up by about $46 million. And so, our net revenue and other sources, after you factor out that recapture increase is a, we actually have about $8.4 million less to operate on next year than we did this year.
Primarily due to recapture?
Primarily, well, actually exclusively due to recapture. So, on the expenditure side of things, and just as the revenue figures did not include that $9.8 million that we might get, the expenditure number that you're looking at does not include any compensation increases, which we'll discuss again on a later slide. So, our baseline budget for this year, starting as we move forward into next year, was $577 million. The items that are on here are basically items that you have discussed at previous meetings. So, you discussed the new positions and the department request at the April 17 meeting, so they're included here. You already discussed the increase in recapture. And then, also, at the April 17 meeting, you discussed about $1.6 million of budget items that would really be a drawdown or usage of our fund balance. So, we kind of show those. You have to adopt those expenditures in the budget, but we like to point out that those are a conscious effort and decision to use some of our fund balance to fund those. So, our expenditures budget in total is $629.7 million. Again, that excludes any compensation increases, and if you back the recapture out of that, which tells what we truly have to spend here locally, it's a little over $479 million. So, now, kind of combining those two slides, we have revenues of about $482.7, expenditures $479, so we actually have a positive balance of about $3.6 million before we decide what we're going to do with compensation. And if you exclude those fund balance items, it's actually a positive balance of a little over $5 million. So, in pretty good shape regardless of what the legislative... So in pretty good shape regardless of what the legislature ends up doing. A lot better shape than we thought would be in back in January. Looking ahead to 2018-19, because we always, as we make decisions, want to make sure that the next year's not going to hit us hard. Assuming 5% property value growth, our local revenues would grow by about $23 million. The state figure goes up primarily because the per capita rate will go up in the second year of the biennium. And then recapture will again take up pretty much everything we're adding as it goes up about $35 million. But overall, it's a pretty good balance between the two years. Not a lot of change and if the, usually we're a little bit conservative with our property value growth figure. So I look for next year to, year after next to not be a tremendously difficult year. Want to talk a little bit about tax pairency as we've talked about recapture. You won't be adopting a tax rate until September, but the figures you see are based on keeping the tax rate with $1.17. Kind of want to show, I always anticipate in October, November, the phone calls start coming in. I get my tax bill, it's so high, what are you doing with all that money? And I think these slides kind of show the lack of transparency with taxation and taxes and particularly how it affects plan O taxpayers. So we start with how much recapture we paid and all of these were after our TRE passed. So all of the figures on these slides began with that $1.17 rate. So there's, there's no impact of the TRE. It's just, it's that same rate every year. When we passed that TRE the first year, we paid $36 million in recapture. Next year, if nothing else happens from the state, we'll be paying over $150 million. So in just four years, or four increments, we've gone from 36 to 150. That's 100, almost $115 million per year increase, which is a 318% increase in what our taxpayers pay in recapture. All they see on the tax bill is a rate for the district, but they don't see, taxpayers don't see what portion of their bill is going to the state. So this shows how the rate being, the total rate being constant over those five years. In 2013-14, we were keeping about $1.08, sending the state nine cents. Next year, we will only be keeping 85 and a half cents and sending the state 31 and a half cents. So when you hear folks talk about effective tax rates, the way I view this chart, for our taxpayers, we've effectively cut their rate by 22 cents, but the state has increased their rate by 22 cents. It's, the increase goes to the state, not here locally. Converting that to what it does to the taxpayer with the average home in the district, it's been an increase in the overall taxes that are charged on the average home of about $985. Most of that, or really all of that's because of the value growth of the home. In 2014, the average home was valued at $244,000. Next year, it's projected to be about $315,000. That's the taxable value after exemptions. So that's a growth of about 29%. Our rate actually dropped a little bit. The debt service side of it did during that five-year period. So here's, of that increase of $985, we're retaining about $215. That means our share has grown by about 6%, which is about 1.5% per year. The state did grant an increase in the basic allotment in two or three of those years. And then with our bond program, the amount that we pay for debt has increased a little bit. So that's really all that we get to keep. It's gone up about 1.5% per year.
And so what did average home values go up over that period of time? Do you have kind of an idea? Because when you look at...
It was 29%. Went from 240, the taxable value after exemptions went from 244 to 3, 244 thousand to 318,000.
Okay. And so what we're keeping here is not at all commensurate with that rate growth?
And Steve, these are the actual figures, correct? Not any kind of adjusted figures?
Right.
For inflation?
Yeah.
It would make a bigger impact.
Right, inflation is...
It's run a little more than 1.5. It's probably closer to 2%.
So if you adjust for inflation, we're actually below a downward trend.
Right. The state, on the other hand, in 2014, we were only paying 200, the average taxpayer is paying $222 of their tax bill that we forwarded to the state. Next year, it's going to be almost $1,000. So that's an increase of $769, which is 346% in four years. But yet, all the taxpayer sees on their bill is plan O ISD. So you as a board have made some great efforts this year with the legislature to talk to them about tax pairency. I don't know that at this late date, anything will come out of the House or Senate. There were two bills that started off as identical, HB 1890 and Senate Bill 1407. Both of them are currently left pending in committee. Probably hard to see the fine print. We worked with Coppel ISD and they kind of did a mock-up of what a tax bill should look like if it was more transparent. And, spoiling, I forgot to put my glasses on. So in the top part of that, you see that taxpayer paid to Dallas County, the hospital district, college district, et cetera. And then in this case, they paid $2,034 to Coppel ISD. The way that those bills read, there would be a disclosure under there and that's the second red arrow, which would say the percentage of the Coppel maintenance and operation tax required for payment to the state for recapture is 28%. The amount that they retained is the second line and it's 72%. Something like that would certainly provide much more meaningful information to the, to the taxpayers when they pay their tax bill if they could see that it's not staying in the school district, a good portion of it's going to the state. So there's three or so, I guess about three or four weeks left for that to move, but at this point, it doesn't look like the legislature is, is a group too interested in telling the taxpayers how much of their bill is going to the state.
Well, and our efforts in that regard to communicate to our constituents as well as to our legislators has been, it's been a really good effort. But the other piece of it is like in this example, 28%. It says on this particular tax statement is not staying in the district. But what I want to know is what is it being spent on? And I don't know that we have a clear answer. Are you going to get there? We don't have a clear answer. And, you know, with an auditor's mindset, I can't follow the dollars. What was it? In the LBB report from the last session, they granted $2.6 billion in franchise tax relief over a biennium. And that's not going to public education. That's a problem. And they're not telling the story because they know recapture is such a large percentage of revenue, they don't want to fix it.
Yeah, they, I know this will come as a shock, but it's politics, right? It's, it's great politics and great theater to get on your soapbox and complain about how much we pay in taxes and property taxes are too high in this state. And you bring out somebody who's being run out of their home because they can't afford to stay because values are increasing so high. And you want to blame the cities and you want to blame the appraisal district, you want to blame the school district. But the fact of the matter is, is the reason this state has no interest in attacking school finance is because they need the recapture dollars, which are being generated by property value growth, which they then put 100% of that money into education. But as that money grows, it allows them to take what they had previously spent from other tax revenues and spend it on other projects. And this year's project is a franchise tax cut. So that's what this is, plain and simple. And unfortunately, we don't have people who, in the legislature, who want to stand up and really tackle this very, very difficult issue. And, you know, this has been my soapbox issue for six years on this board. And it drives me bananas that in the reddest county, in the reddest state, that we can't get anybody to go to bat for this. Soapbox off.
How do you really do it? That's the thing. We help them bounce the state budget. That's what it is. And it is ridiculous. And, you know, maybe someday, the legislators will decide to tackle the issue, but instead of keep on putting on those Band-Aids, it's ridiculous.
Well, the House budget does help us a little bit. So the House is, if that budget is successful, that saves us $10 million in recapture. So, you know, that's a step. And that's what they were trying to do, take a step. Yeah.
As far as our fund balance, the other quick thing I'd say about the state not putting the recapture money truly back into education, the Senate appropriations bill takes into account that Chapter 41 districts are paying, it's over a billion dollars more in recapture over the next biennium. And yet, the state, even though they have that money, the state's contribution decreases by $1.8 billion. So it's impossible, if we're sending them a billion more, but they're sending other districts a billion less, you can't say that that money is going to districts that don't have high property wealth. It's not. Because we send them more money, but they cut what they send the other districts. So again, it's the lack of transparency and that's very frustrating. As far as, so back to our kind of budget status at this point, one thing that we look at moving forward every year is our fund balance. This shows our fund balance, both in raw numbers and as a percentage of the following year's budget for the last 10 years. The actual fund balance has grown. If you look at the percentage though, in the right-hand column, it kind of peaked in 2012 and it slid a little bit. That's just a function of the, I hate to keep harping on recapture, but when recapture's included in that numerator and it keeps going way up, our fund balance is a percentage of our, of our total budget. Even if it grows a little, the percentage is probably going to go down because the numerator, the denominator's getting bigger. And I wish his math teachers would be kind of do the numerator, denominator, the number on the bottom.
The calculator.
The formula on the right-hand side. But we are, we are in very good shape with our fund balance and certainly one thing that the rating agencies look at when we sell our bonds and one of the main reasons that we have one of the few districts with a AAA rating on our own. The other thing that we'd like to kind of discuss with you briefly tonight is compensation options and costs. We are planning at the next board meeting to ask you to adopt the compensation package. We wanted to show you on here two or three options. It seems like most districts surveyed or there might be a small handful that are over 3%, but 3% kind of seems to be the top with just a few outliers. So we looked at, you see there the cost of the 2.5, a 3, and a 3.5%. We also discussed at that March meeting, the fact that we ranked very close to the bottom in our, our contribution for health insurance. So a $20 increase there would be about $1 million. I think we're going to be in good enough shape, I'll kind of walk you through the numbers. We're really leaning towards the 3% and the $20 to get us off the bottom of the list on health insurance and to keep us competitive and near the top of the list on the, on the actual salaries.
Steve, are we still talking about the $500 stipend?
Yes, that's included in the budget numbers that you've seen. I would suggest in a year that we're not having severe budget difficulties. It would be a big mistake to take something away from 7,000 employees. So we would like to include that. I think it's something that they've really grown to a, I know it's great. It has a greater impact on the lower-paid employees because it's a flat $500. Right after Thanksgiving, so the timing is great.
So what's total, total dollar value to do that for our employees?
That's just, for the general fund, it's a little bit under $3 million. I mean, it equates to about the same as a 1% raise, but if you put it in a raise, just my personal feelings and the board may feel differently. If you put it in a raise, the people at the top benefit. If you took that same money and put it into a percentage raise, our lowest paid employees would see their 500 shrink to 200 and be spread out over 12 months. So our recommendation on that's going to be to keep that in there until we have a year. For you as a board too, if we ever fall on a year like we did in 2011 where we had the riff, that's a real easy thing to suspend that people can understand. If you put it in salaries, it's pretty much permanent. So there's lots of pros and cons to each of those, but we've talked about it and as I said, feel like it's in there and we shouldn't be taking something away unless it's financial problems that take them. So I, so if you look at a 3% and the $20 increase, it's about 2.10, $10.4 million. If you remember a few slides ago when we talked about our surplus without the compensation increase, we were at 5.2 million. So that would put us back into a paper deficit of about 5 million. We still hadn't counted getting any money from the state. And so even if we don't get that 9.8 million, hopefully there'll be some in there to get us real close to break even. We have a very adequate fund balance and year in and year out, we underspend the budget by about 2 to 2.5%. So I think it would be a very sound budget with that 3% and the $20. So that's, unless there's a lot of negative feedback, that's probably what we plan to bring you in two weeks.
And that $20 increase on the health insurance contribution, we have what, 65% participation of employees on health insurance?
Right. It was, is that right, Matthew? Was it about 65?
66%.
Oh, I'm off 5. Okay.
Every district today is somewhere between 65 and 70. Just black clockwork.
Steve, you had said something about if the fund balance gets too high, the state can come and take some of that money?
No, that was, well, it's true with the FANS budget, the U.S. Department of Agriculture that funds the Free and Reduced Lunch Program does not want you to have more than a three months supply in there. There is no, it's kind of odd with the, with the state because there are legislative sessions when they say school districts' fund balances are too high. And so that becomes a thought. There was actually a bill this year, and I don't know that it went anywhere, that would require the districts to have a minimum fund balance of 30%. So, you know, I think our number's good and we use it wisely, but in the case of the operating fund balance, the state currently cannot take that.
So if you use 30% as kind of a bookmark, I mean, we're, that's what we're budgeted at even though the raw numbers seem higher than in years past.
So here's what's left. We're towards the end of the process. At the May 16 meeting, we'll work in the compensation recommendations and bring you an actual proposed budget at that point. We also have to have you authorize the notice of the budget and tax rate hearing. You do that in advance, then we advertise it and then we hold that tax rate hearing, budget and tax rate hearing at the June 6 meeting. And following that, we'll ask you to adopt the budget. You still won't adopt the tax rate. We wait until we get the certified taxable values and then we adopt the tax rates usually We wait until we get the certified taxable values, and then we adopt the tax rates usually at that first meeting in September. So we're nearing the end of the process, and that kind of brings you up to date with where we are.
I have a quick question. So last, I'm going to start getting confused from the meeting wise, but I think it was the last meeting when I had raised the fact that, you know, we didn't have athletic equipment on a useful life and whatnot. And I know we're moving forward with the flooring and the weight rooms. I was just curious, will the June 6 presentation include the information applicable to, you know, replacing the athletic equipment? And, you know, I know I didn't get to discuss the fine arts instruments very much, but, you know, to me, there's similar, it's not exactly the same, I know, because they did have some kind of rotation for the instruments. But just getting everything up to what I think PISD standards should be, and, you know, what the community expects, are we going to be on that path?
I think we'll be on that path. I think that the budget that gets adopted that night, it'll have the specific functional cost, but we normally don't plan to get into that detailed depth once we get past that department meeting. So I guess what I'm saying is, those things will be accounted for, but I don't think we'll have a presentation on them.
Okay.
Don't plan to.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Now I'd like to turn our attention to our legislative report. Carla and her department have tracked all of these various bills that relate to all of the different priorities that the board has adopted. At this point in time, this is really an opportunity for staff or board members to fill in blanks if you want to share any information related to any of your personal activities related to legislative work or other information you might like to share. So I'll first of all turn it over to Ms. Oliver.
Thank you, President Bender. I will just say again, you already know what the report is, you've got that at your disposal to review. One thing, and I'll mention appreciation to Steve Fortenberry, he and I have talked about this back and forth. And if there's one thing that's not there, and I wanted to be certain that possibly you might mention it, President Bender, is House Bill 486 and the pending action with that as it moves out of the House. So I'll defer to you on that.
So today's Tuesday, and the House Bill 486 is a bill that allows us to reduce our TRE, our voter-approved rate, which voters approve $1.17 that we can tax out. It would allow us to reduce that rate when we can, but also increase it back up to the previously, not to exceed the previously approved rate, if we need that money, say for instance, to make our recapture obligation to the state. So it gives us that flexibility without having to hold another election. The good news is that House Bill 486 passed the House floor today. Now, it has to go to the other chamber and move through that whole system as well. So this is the first time I think it's made it this far. I think it always gets stuck in the House, in the Senate. So we'll see if it's different this time.
So the, this bill would mean potentially a savings for the district. Like Steve, you said maybe $9, $10 million, correct, potentially?
For each penny that we could reduce that $1.17, it would save our taxpayers about 4.1 or 4.2 million. And yet, it would only cost our budget about 2.5 because it would also reduce what we're paying in recapture. So, boy, if we could get some help passing that and could drop the rate a little bit, we can do mainly by impacting, to a large extent, just decreasing our recapture.
Yeah. So I think what, you know, I mean, this just goes back to the recapture issue and really keeping our funds here. I just looked up the record vote. Unfortunately, all three of our representatives voted against this. That's disappointing because we had expressly reached out to them to ask them to support this.
Absolutely.
I would ask that we continue to work with Senator Taylor and ask that he support this on the Senate side, any kind of companion pieces they look at this. This is important because this could save our taxpayers. This is property tax relief. So if they want property tax relief, here's the opportunity to do it.
Right. Because Steve, didn't you give us an example? If we could save almost 4 cents on the tax rate this year, .38, the average plan OISD homeowner would save, what, $113 on their?
Right.
So $113 is meaningful tax relief for an individual homeowner, considering the tax bill overall.
I think, I don't know about our legislators, I think some legislators or some interest groups view this as allowing districts to raise their tax rate. There was actually a compromise on the bill which said if you had a TRE and your rate's been lowered, this doesn't allow you to raise it. All it would do would allow, the only thing districts could do would be to lower their rates. Now, it would allow them after they've done that, if they need to, to raise it back up, but it's definitely a, you know, a tax reduction bill, not a tax increase bill. Under the current system, there's 442 districts that have had TREs. All but 27 of those 442 are taxing at that maximum rate. So the current system doesn't incentivize lowering tax rates because, in our case, you're fearful, as you see that recapture going up 45 or 50 million a year, you don't know if you're going to be able to meet that obligation if you keep your rate at the lower rate. So the current system is definitely not working, and we think this would be an improvement. Would love them, give it a two- or four-year try and come back and see how many districts have lowered their rate. I think they'd be surprised.
I just think it's funny, after all the hours they've spent traveling, you know, across Texas, getting input, and I guess nothing's going to happen with the property taxes.
No. In fact, I met with Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick's education policy maker in February, and she let me know that this biennium, all they were going to look at is a framework for the next biennium. And I said, well, so I guess our taxpayers have to wait two years for property tax relief. So I think this is an important bill. I hope that if anybody's listening, that we advocate for the Senate bill. What's the number?
1288.
1288, thank you. Authored by Taylor, right? Not, but Larry Taylor.
Right.
And then, I know we talked, I think what's before this in the list is the transparency work. I just have a question. Do you recall, you and I worked on some language that would have given some transparency to the notification and the resolution that we have to read and the motion that we have to make? Do you know if that language ever got added to a bill?
Not that I'm aware of. I've heard nothing to that effect.
That was something that Jeff said he would add as an amendment, but that bill hasn't come to the floor for that kind of action, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Before we close that, I did want to share with you, President Bender, that just in preparation, knowing that the session ends this month and so on, not that we're done, but that it's coming, I did pull the legislative timeline that we've been following and have been posting on our agenda. And I just wanted to share that we've had, I would say, four or five pretty major media reports based on some of the tax transparency issues that have come forward, and I know our board's been very, very diligent about helping with that. In fact, the tax transparency research has really become very much repeated data points, I think, for many other districts, either in testimony or by other legislators. In fact, I believe the discussion was that Van Dever had even used some of those statistics today. So all that to say, thank you for that, and we'll keep that timeline going, but I think that doesn't go without mention.
Well, we know who the source of all that good information is, and it's our CFO, Steve Fortenberry. He's been diligent and very responsive.
I don't have anything better to do.
Don't admit that.
Okay, thank you. At most of our regular meetings, we have policies on the agenda for the board's consideration. These policies have undergone prior review by the district's attorney and by each board member. I invite Carla Oliver to introduce these policies. Ms. Oliver, please.
Thank you. Item A is Policy Update 107, affecting local policies, is presented for your adoption under second reading this evening. There are revisions that were listed in your packet that were quite minor, and with that, I'll turn it over to you to entertain a motion.
Do I have a motion to adopt Update 107 on second reading?
I move that the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by TASB Policy Service and according to an instruction sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual, Update 107, with revisions as noted to the following policies. DEE Local, Compensation Benefits, Expense Reimbursement. FFA Local, Student Welfare, Wellness and Health Services. And FJ Local, Student Fundraising.
Can you say this again?
We will note that there are a few additional edits included-
Yes.
-in the motion. So Denise, you'll capture that. Do I have a second?
I second, and I'm going to miss Carolyn reading those long things for all of us.
That's why I had to do it.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item B.
Thank you. EIF Local, Academic Achievement in Regard to Graduation. This policy is presented for adoption under second reading this evening.
Do I have a motion to adopt Item B, EIF Local, on second reading?
So me.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion passes unanimously. Item C.
District of Innovation Policies. These local policies are listed for presented under adoption under first and final reading as it relates to our DOI plan and working with TASB and pulling policies that would be affected. That way, we can move forward in a timely manner, and those are there for your review.
Do I have a motion to adopt Item C on first and final reading and review DK Exhibit? All in, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. That concludes policies. Do we have any public comment cards on non-agenda topics?
We do not.
Okay. With no further business, the board now reconvenes in closed session to continue discussion of Item C1.